I'd like to call the Harrisburg Plan and Commissioner's meeting order at approximately 6:30 p.m. Commissioners, you received your July 5th, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any changes, deletions, additions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The move is second to approve the minutes as they are. All those in favor of the date by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Upsettee? Motion carries. Under old business, there is none. Under new business, item number one, this is a variance application for 222 Chestnut Street, which is own downtown center. It's followed by the Harrisburg University of Science and Technology. It's to install three wall signs on site, which is more than permitted by rights, and each wall sign is larger than permitted by rights. Stand.
Yes, we have it. So the applicant is proposing to install three wall signs on site, which is more than permitted by rights, and each wall sign is larger than permitted by rights. Section 7-3.56, there's any code of wall sign that should be listed in the district according to 75 square feet. The applicant is proposing to install wall signs at 448 square feet, 202 square feet, and 150 square feet. Official wall sign at our properties is the intention on site approved. The property in 222 Chestnut Street is probably a force of proportion set very less small right away. The current consolidation is part of the land development plan approved by city council since September 2020. There was also the construction of the current building on site. Property is a 0.67 acre lot, two 302 square feet, with approximately 261,000 square feet, which was constructed in 2023. Building is bonded by the library street, the property in 18 South Third Street to the north, Third Street and 18 South Third Street to the east, Chestnut Street to the south, the property at 216 Chestnut Street to the west. This semi-detached structure features elements of modern architectural style. Characterizing features include the modest geometric design of the structure, multi-passed with the facade featuring brick and metal and concrete panels, the variety of window designs and configurations on the first floor, deeply recessed ceiling entrances, the large angled awnings on the two primary elevations, and the prominent two-story penthouse on the roof with glass curtain walls. There are two main entrances, one each on Chestnut Street and South Third Street. Entrance on Chestnut Street features four view metal doors linked by side lights and top transoms, which are set in best view of clad brick decked direction with a little facade and a scratch of art finish. Entrance on South Third Street features a similar configuration. Administration throughout the building is married. The first floor includes large plate glass windows and metal frames and a variety of dressing configurations. Network doors also feature a varying configuration pattern. The primary facade is featured section of glass curtain walls with multiple colored patterns, so as portions of urban windows that wrap around the side of this corner are available in the interior facade. Structure features a large roof, primarily clad members, with a number of penthouse structures and rooftop rooms. One of the city's newest structures, the building inflects more modern architecture than most of the surrounding properties, with the exception of Harrisburg University's existing facility on Market Street. However, the building's massive design reflects a wide architecture variety downtown Harrisburg and helps introduce the character and the street state and neighborhood. The planning bureau staff recommends a request be approved for the following reasons. While the planning bureau disagrees, the applicant's interpretation is only code and appeal regarding the allowable number of signs. It does agree that the building and site possess unique conditions that justify the requested variances, specifically regarding the height of the building, the square footage of the facade, and the building's location within the downtown neighborhood, featuring similarly sized buildings and accompanying wall signage. On the proposed side, it will be elevated at the top of the building, and thus will minimal impact on adjacent properties and the general public, particularly at ground level. Signage is located at an elevation above the height of all surrounding buildings, and in the case of the sign number three, is on a building facade set back from the property line, plus the impacts of the lighting on adjacent properties and the general work of the building.
Thank you, sir. Could you state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Ash McComby. I'm an attorney with Denise Wallace and Nurt, 100 Pine Street, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and we represent Harrisburg University of Science and Technology with respect to the application for you.
Okay, you heard the staff report, but the conditions, are you acceptable of these conditions?
We are.
Did you? Sorry, there's another condition. So used to get this. Did you want to add anything to the project?
I'd hate to step on Jeff's toes because he covered our bases for us so, so well. You know, I think one, one additional thing I'll, I'll add, and I know HU and UPMC would like to offer a couple comments also about, about their involvement in the city and being happy to be here. But rather than run you through the, the packet that you're, you have, I am going to just point out a couple quick things in this packet and one additional. I think you're all pretty familiar with the building, so I don't think we need to go through the, the normal background section that, that we do with all of that. Although those photographs are also included in this, in this packet. The, the application goes through in detail both, both the appeal and the variances. But what I'd really like to point out here that's kind of new to the application, that you may not have seen, is if you go to exhibit B in that packet, we had been able to add some additional street views, renderings, to give you an idea of what the, the UPMC sign specifically would, would look like. Those are the two larger signs. One of them is from Market Street, looking up at, up at the building. And then the last page in that exhibit, A2, is from Market and Third, looking back across the street over Market toward the building, just to give you an idea of the scope relative to both the building and the surrounding area. The third exhibit in that, in that packet provides the sign schematics and size. And if there are any specific questions about the, the signs or lighting or anything like that, we have somebody here from Advanced Signs to answer it. The only other addition is the pages that I handed out separately. After submitting the application, Harrisburg University kind of looked at the, the venting that is on the side of the building where the original Harrisburg U sign was proposed. And at first, we thought just kind of lowering the sign below that would, would look okay and work. But upon further consideration, it's going to lower the sign too far, and it's going to be too far down on, on the building from an aesthetic standpoint as well. So they're not proposing to change the size of the Harrisburg U sign, they're just shifting it from one side, one building face, to, to another building face, as it is depicted in, in this picture here, this photograph here. So we will, can submit that separately to you through email if you need for the zoning board in advance, but that's really the only change from what was submitted in the packet.
So you're stating the, on this drawing, this sign will move down or stay?
No, so if you compare it to exhibit A2, which is also labeled as exhibit B in the application packet, it, it shows a walkover, since we're not early in here in here. Originally, it shows the Harrisburg University sign on this wall. And it's just being, it's being moved to the wall, as it is depicted there, same size as the UPMC. So as, as you're looking at that, that exhibit in the packet, it would flip sides to be the same side as the UPMC and then drop down to that, that larger wall face.
Commissioners, I have no other questions at this time. And if you have any concerns or questions, I'll start out with Commissioner McKendick.
Thank you. Couple of quick questions. So what is the, what is the, first of all, I want to admit to you, because when I originally did not see this materialized, and we need to see this in here. What is the lighting type that's going to be within these signs? Are they lit behind on a floating field and letters themselves being lit, or what is the?
They're all internally illuminated.
What is, Joff, there's a question for you. What is the percentage of exceedance that they're requesting? Do we know that?
So again, the allowable square footage for signs in the DC district is 75 square feet, so the largest one being 448 is, or six times larger or so, essentially, and then the other ones about, you know, roughly half that, and then the other ones about twice the size. So some might be like six, two and a half, or six, three and a half, and twice the size of the permitted signage.
Yeah, and just having Joe's been on the board a long time, I mean, we have had, I think, some presidential situations, which might have helped the applicant out a little bit, had they been aware of the Farm Show complex, the side meet on there. There were at least two on Front Street, Lawyer's Office, and I forget the other one. And in those cases, it was based on speed of the car and excessive crime, relatively speaking, Capital Economy Center. Same thing with the 2,800-foot long site and, and everything else that was there. So, I mean, I, in my mind, I think about it in terms of those prior presidential decisions as opposed to making any zoning law here, and it was essentially based upon contact time of, of someone moving past, past the building. Now, the same thing goes in my mind with the perspective, and that's why I think these are very valuable, because taken in perspective, you know, a 75-foot sign directly in front of me, lifted up into space, is probably bigger in the visual field than what you've actually created on the buildings. And, you know, so I can feel more comfortable with that, you know, as being part of the argument as well. So, you know, I think it's a reasonable solution in, in a city that once had neon signs on the roofs of all the buildings, you know, some of those have gone away, unfortunately. So, no other questions?
Commissioner, on the floor?
Jeffrey, one of the rationales for the planning approval, and this was the signs at the top of it, the elevation. Have you seen the, what's, what's your opinion on their revised?
So this is the first time I've seen this, but the only thing I think that really changed from the planning bureau's perspective, or at least the case report, is that the one reason for justification for approval is that one of the signs in the three was set back, which is now no longer going to be the case, but being that that didn't preclude us from our community approval. The other two signs, I don't think the addition of the proposed permission by the applicant changes the planning bureau's decision.
And you say you can discuss later about your relationship between Harrisburg University and UPMC?
Yeah, they'll, they'll talk to that.
Yeah, I have no further questions.
Commissioner Reed?
No, I have no questions. I thought the report, though, was very well done, very thorough, so it was very helpful.
Commissioner Jordan?
The only question I have is for the signs illumination, is that going to be 24/7 or is that just going to be like at night, like after dawn?
Yeah, is it dimmable throughout the dusk?
Yeah, they, they can certainly be dimmable, but our normal practice is just to keep signs on in dusk and dawn, and it works.
That's all.
With that, if we have any other questions, I can come back to you. I'll go to the public. Is there anyone for or against this project? And if you are, please state your name and address, and I'll start to my right.
Thank you very much, Chairman. My name is Ryan Riley. I serve as the Vice President for Harrisburg University, 326 Market Street. And I'm speaking in for, obviously, our, our signage and project. And I'll just touch a little on the, and the partnership with UPMC. So the development of this building is an expansion of our academic programs, but an anchor of that, which represents the majority of the building, is our health science programs. And so this building was designed in partnership with UPMC, and it will host, not to take too much starlight away from UPMC, the largest nursing school in the Commonwealth, starting with 200 nurses in the fall. So this is very much an extension of our academic programs, but in firm partnership with UPMC. They have roughly 75, maybe 60, 60 to 75,000 square feet of the building. So this is not a passive relationship, they're actively part of it. And then the other piece that I would mention is, you know, Harrisburg, years ago, when the envisioned report was done that gave way of HU, we were the largest capital city in America without a four-year university. We have great community college, we have some good satellites that support. So we want this building to really stand out as being a representation of, of Harrisburg University and a real pillar for the partnership that we have with UPMC. Thank you.
There's one question.
Oh, sure.
Is this sign interested in like a partnership with UPMC, or is it sort of like Wyson Market did with Farm Show, they sold that space to, had Wyson's paid to do that?
Naming rights. The naming rights?
Yeah, was that like a naming right?
That, that's a great question. So this was a combination of, of both of those pieces. So they lease two floors from the university, so to that end, they are paying to occupy certain elements of their program. We also teach the medical science programs. So UPMC has several schools of nursing. In this case, we actually support the anatomy and physiology courses, the biology courses, so they don't bring in those faculty, so we co-support those programs. With regard to the naming, there is a period of time attached to that. So at this point, that first piece of signage is up for 10 years with the partnership that runs concurrent to our academic contract.
So it's basically both?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on my right?
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple words, if I could, hold to here, and I'm the Vice President with UPMC over support operations, and appreciate being here tonight, and thank you for your consideration. UPMC is, as he suggested, is one of the, the largest programs in the Commonwealth. In fact, our nursing program at collaboration with Harrisburg University is the largest of UPMC. And we are 42 hospitals strong now with 95,000 employees, but as you know, there's a nationwide nursing shortage. And that nursing shortage affects typically everybody in Harrisburg, not to mention our surrounding counties. We have been fortunate through this collaboration to currently have about 50 nursing students in there that will graduate shortly, and another 250 enrolled for the August program. So with this program, we're going to be able to graduate nurses from start to finish in approximately 16 months. And this is all about patient care. With the influx of nurses through this program, we're able to fulfill our needs to staffing at Harrisburg Hospital and the like. These nurses, as you can imagine, will, will not only work in Harrisburg, but they will most likely reside in this area as well, obviously stimulating the local economy and supporting that to the, to our degree as possible. So happy to be part of it, and again, appreciate your consideration, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the center? And anyone to my left, left? If not, I think this is pretty straightforward, Commissioners. I think it's a great project. I definitely like the partnership you have going there. As a matter of fact, I sit on the board at Hack. We also have a agreement with Harrisburg University with the nursing program. So I'm glad everyone is sort of working together. And as far as signage, you know, you needed some signs to reflect that, you know, where you're at. So I'm very much in favor of this project. Commissioners, with that, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
It's been moved as second for approval with no conditions. All those favor, say plus n aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Upsettee? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The second item under new business, this is the land development plan application
for 228 Longest Street. It's own downtown center. It's followed by Jester Esquire, I thought pronounced the S name wrong, Esquire. And it's to convert the former Federal Courthouse building into a 163-unit apartment building with potential ground floor commercial space. Sarah?
Yeah, so the applicant proposing to convert the former Federal Courthouse building into a 163-unit apartment building, potential commercial space on the first floor. Property at 228 Longest Street is a 0.71 acre lot, featuring an 11-story, 196,000-foot sized structure, construction 9568. Property is bonded by the streets to the north, the streets to the east, Longest Street to the south, and Main Court Street to the west. This detached structure features elements of the international architecture style. Characteristic features include marble facade on the first floor, recessed behind, conways, port pillars around the perimeter of the building, large planar beds around the perimeter of the building, three decorative sculptures suspended in two pillars between the other entrances, and a large eagle statue at the same location on the southern elevation. Glass curtain wall facade is there before us, loading area on Court Street, and the underground part of the garage accessible and intended to move along Main Court Street. There are two main entrances, each on the order and southern side, and donate, which are at least two, four view metal doors and simple metal frames. The top, by large, plate glass windows. The doors are separated by different features, including revolving door, additional access doors, and many questions. The entrances along the northern elevation, sidewalk, are at sidewalk level and have no immediate access. The entrances on the southern elevation are accessed by a wide flight, some steps or metal rails. There are additional access doors along the loading dock on the western elevation of the building. Administration features the aforementioned hairline doors above the entrances, and the glass curtain wall system on all four facades. Structures topped with light colored roof and material and a large mechanical penthouse. Though there are other buildings in downtown Harrisburg, similarly denied in period of architect of construction, the subject property reflects a notable example of its architectural style, retains much of its original integrity, and exhibits unique denied elements. 这套 structure contributes significantly to the architectural and historic character of the street state and neighborhood. The planning bureau staff recommends a request be approved with the following conditions. Planning bureau recommends that the applicant coordinate with the city office to provide landscaping on site, considering installing data, plans, and pollinator plans in the escape areas around the perimeter of the site. Planning bureau recommends that the applicant provide information regarding the economic impacts of the project in advance, reviewed by city council, so the city understands serviceability of the property and considering the potential impacts. Finally, the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to ensure that the account for the building is updated or if it was changed in use, and that their refuse storage and removal are appropriate for the site. Planning bureau staff recommends request be approved for the following reasons. Proposed project will adaptively reuse and tax exempt institution of property and ensure that the large floor unit on the site, which might have lodged in the vacant, will be activated. The applicant is pursuing individual listing of property in the National Register in certain places, supplementing Harrisburg's significant order of historic resources within the modern issue of its inventory. Project will introduce new units, bringing residents to support the business of the facilities, and will create commercial space to promote the unit. Finally, given the proximity to cat houses and market garages, the inclusion of ice storage for long stay, projects will situate to promote multiple transportation by future residents and patients and businesses on the site.
Thank you, Sarah. Could you state your name, your address, and the relationship to this project?
Yes, my name is Yasek Nell, and my address is 17 Decatur Way, Old Bridge, New Jersey, U. R. 1852. And I'm, you know, I'm a developer of the project.
Barry McKissick with McKissick Associates Architects. We are the design professional assisting in development, 317 North Front Street, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. There are two other individuals we have tonight that probably could identify themselves as they may be doing some testimony in Mark.
You, Mark Rass, you and Dave W., who are the six of the senior years of the prepared legal lands of the city.
Jonathan Dowd, who was still in his destruction, and where you see him on the destruction side of the project. Address is 430 North Front Street, Harrisburg.
Okay. All the gentlemen have heard the staff report, what the conditions are, are you acceptable of those conditions?
Yes.
The only, first question, I'm not quite concerned, but as most unit commissioners know, I'm always concerned about the parking. And I know by right, you don't have to have parking. But knowing how congested downtown section is in downtown, you just heard about Harrisburg University, and they're going to open in September, that other building, as well as other things going on. I guess I'm just concerned with that parking. I know the residents probably have to get their own parking, but, you know, when they have visitors, and even, even like, you know, downtown, everyone takes everybody's space anyway. So I don't know, maybe somehow address that part of it some way. I know you have 30 spaces or so, but I would assume the staff would take some of those spaces.
Thank you, Commissioner. We are looking into this issue, and it's actually for a practical purpose, and they should develop it, not only for the equal purposes. And since we have started the planning of the project, we've looked at a couple of options of utilizing the existing municipal parking, and we are, have been really good progress. So we will be contracting with some of the city want of the garage, the, and use the side of the building to make available for our residents at least a minimum of one spot per unit on a long-term basis. Nothing is approved yet, which is still a discussion, but we're really dealing with a discussion of utilizing a deal. And again, that's not only for poor purposes, but for practical use of the building. We cannot anticipate, as you said, with the commercial activities that we're also trying to introduce into the project on the ground floor. And we, we wanted to go ahead and install some of the charging for other cars and things of the sort. So this is something that we are working on for practical purposes, and we will get something done in the park to be attached or run, and attached with the building to serve our residents.
Yeah, and what I can add is that we, as you noted, 30 spaces in the reconfigured basement that had previously been used on the House 55 or 56, but they were stacked in and not really a mode that works for what we want to do. As, as Mr. Hall had noted, that lower storage space will be housing a number of the EV charging stations. We also will accommodate the handicap spaces for our residents in that location. That basement, well, I call it the parking level, also is being defined so that we will have a secure bicycle and scooter parking available to our folks within, within the building, because it does have direct elevator access up into the building, although it was limited in the past because of government security protocols, but they're there. So it's kind of nice the way that works. The other thing that we are in discussion with SP plus P is the possibility of buying out a number of on-street spaces on the Locust Street side, because we will have a secure mailroom for deliveries of packages. And by the time, you imagine, you know, if it's 162 people, it's Christmas, the line of Amazon trucks and FedEx trucks and UPS trucks alone will shut the city down. So we want to make sure that we have the ability for them to get in and make deliveries. So we're, I think the, the main thing for us is that from a traffic standpoint, we represented that reduction from what had happened previously with the Federal Courthouse. The number of spaces that the government had, they have given those back, the federal government at least over there, but the number of people was far beyond 162. Now, we are looking at a different variety of commercial uses within the building. Those may have different variant.
But they're all concurrent, concurrent uses. They're used day, night, or night, so once we, we have the party parking that's attached to the public, we'll be able to utilize these spaces concurrently.
And this is not send out a photocopy of the resident parking for $30 to spaces that don't exist, as has happened in the past, when that's everyone's concern.
Maybe you could talk to Harrisburg Park, Park. Maybe you could talk to the Harrisburg park manager.
Might talk to somebody on that.
We have some contact.
The other is more of a concern that you might get coming down the alley of the city council, and that's affordable housing. Did you take any adding consideration?
The affordable housing options.
Yeah, the policy that the city council has.
Well, we've looked into it, and we're prepared to bring some serious consideration to the government's part of our application. And as our part of our performance, I think we're talking something that is sensible to present to the state house. But we're looking, we're prepared to read some of that, and we'll support this program very meaning to the mayor, and also we're studying the economics of it, and we'll make something happen. That's something.
I brought it up anyway because you're going to definitely show your hair from the city councils.
No, we'll be prepared for that. And we'll count as something sensible that makes sense for everyone.
Yeah, in addition to that, if I might, perhaps Jonathan, speak to me, contracting plan or at least certification.
Sure. One of the things that we are looking to make part of this project is to use local contractors that are here based out of the city of Harrisburg, but then also minority women on, regular known, disabled contractors as well. So, we're planning to, in the near future, before construction will start, hold a, I'd almost say, an in-person debrief to potential contractors that would want to learn more about the project, and then also get on our bidding list and then be able to bid on the project once it's made available. We just recently partnered with the city as well in the building, did one for our project along those Sixth Street, and so we played on something very similar to this project, but that one was very successful. I think we had closest 60 vendors that showed up. So, it was very well, it was very well attended, a lot of them people that I know, so it was really good to connect with them. So, we already have somewhat of a ongoing list to kind of work from. So, we're also making sure that we're capturing more diversity in the way of contracts as it relates to this project.
That's all the questions I have at this time, and I'll go to commissioners, questions that concern Commissioner Ochoa. Well, first, Commissioner McKissick.
I should note that I am abstaining from this vote, participation, and debate on that side.
Commissioner Ochoa.
What's the breakdown between the number of one bedrooms, two bedrooms efficiency?
Yeah, the.
The best was just a one bedroom, and about 14 units, two bedrooms. And perhaps to use, you have small bedroom, because it's, but the larger case one bedroom.
Yeah, this is kind of a typical floor plan, and I think this was in what we handed out to everyone. The challenge we have, as with most intercity former office buildings, they were not built, they were built to maximize efficiency of typing pools and all that. We end up about 65 foot deep to existing corridor network within the building. We have a very defined spine, elevators, air shafts, stair towers, things that are very well built and are not going to move economically, couldn't move for us. So, we've had to work within that depth, and so towards that end, that has defined the project. But what you will see is you look at some of the one bedroom units, you'll see a number of them are book ADA. We also have one bedroom plus den. We have two bedrooms plus den. Den really is a space that's not with a window view out to the building. Could be an overflow, you know, space for somebody staying a night for you, probably as you work at home, then, you know, work at home office space. So, the grid is a very strong column grid in the building, and it's pretty much a five-foot grid on the whole thing. It's kind of interesting in that, you know, you never see anything with that much of a wall geometrically. And so, it's really driven, what we're doing is we get up in upper floors, something wrong right here. You'll see they're very similar. We do have some zones where we will have additional potential office, small offices can be rented by the residents if they don't want to work within their, their space. On the upper levels, we have an interesting challenge. We're looking at commercial space and/or amenities as we go up. Actually, getting up on floors nine and 10 is about 28 feet high because the courtrooms are up there. You don't perceive that from the outside of the building, but this side and that side, on these floors, we begin to redefine it to two bedroom units, some of more than one bedroom units. And floor above, of course, as we tear out the holding cells, which none of us realized were there until after the judges them down and we got to see everything, you'll see different configurations. The very upper floor we're proposing may have some larger two bedroom, two bedroom plus den units as a kind of a, I use a bad term, penthouse, but it really is as view at that location and some additional storage. So, a lot of it is stacking because we have 16 inch concrete floors, so the number of places we can core pipes through for drains and things are very limited, and we want to control them. As you go upstairs, since I've got this going, the upper level, as you saw some of the, I'll show you renderings, basically is your walking track around the perimeter, penthouse lounge area, the fitness center, and a catering kitchen will be available to residents to do those family parties and get togethers and those sorts of things. And it's a phenomenal, phenomenal view. So, like I say, the stack in the building, this is a great, a great graphic. These are your floors, and you can see the height of the courtrooms, and fairly tall height available for the penthouse amenities on the top. And a lot of that is equipment we no longer need. They're very, very large, you don't see them from the street, but they're very large, multi-story mechanical penthouses on 12, 13, and 14. So, we'll be using converting those as we remove some of the equipment that isn't needed for the current reuse. And of course, we have the parking level, and we also have the unknown former bomb shelter, but it will become storage for all of our residents on site, which is on sub-basement two of. I would try to make everything as livable as possible, but within an urban setting.
And utilizing, preserving the spine of the building, which is, most of these office buildings have a challenge of using them for residential because they have a huge wide fuel bay. This building was benefited from the wider core, which allows to design around it.
And then I'll take other questions.
No, I appreciate what you're, the efforts you're making to alleviate the parking situation. What you said makes sense, and from a county standpoint, you're motivated to do something with the parking as we are, or as the city is, because people, at least the space, don't want to park out of the parking option. Finally, yeah, I guess the parking situation could be alleviated if you just maintained it as a, you know, commercial office building, but post code, I think that's, that's not much of your thing.
Yeah, that's.
I think this is the only useful part of it, so.
Yeah, to the degree that there could potentially be some additional, you know, office inclusions or maybe some live-work type scenarios. We aren't precluding any of that at this point, but we're targeting immediately residential.
Yeah, like what we heard in the previous application with nursing students and things, the demand would be high for these smaller units residential in town. And the demand for the office use, not only here in town, it's nationwide, it's something that will be a challenge for years. So, this is a trend going nationwide. And what's good about this building, it's reusable with least of preparation. The building is, nothing is going to be changed as far as the footprint or the outside of the building. All is a work from inside, utilizing, I'd say, 40% of our stair will stay. Floors marbles, staircases, elevator shafts, all this will stay with some maintenance. So, that was our thinking, that the best use of the building, to get it quickly to operation. As you say, which was the current tenant would be getting the building at the end of September. So, therefore, we want the building to be a kid, we want to utilize as quickly as possible.
And one of the things that that worked very well because the building has had a preliminary determination of eligibility to be placed on National Historic Register. Not necessarily because of the architecture, although it's been noted, the state's preservation officer to be a great example late, mid-century, late modern. If you look in Harrisburg, where there are no other glass boxes, this is what you saw in, you know, in the mixing. It also is a great example of extent federal courthouses from that period. But why it's really significant is what occurred to the courtrooms. It's a cultural significance of the different trials, different events that happened in that building, and that's really what we've, what we've been improved on. So, as we go through that, that works within, it's kind of an interesting blend because it's so well-built, and we have terrazzo floors, we have marble walls. I mean, what do you do with these? And so, as you look at those, those are the same elements that you're looking to preserve when you're looking at a historical approach. Now, that will include modifying the curtain wall a little bit to allow certain areas to be operable windows. That was very important to be able to have outside connection. But visually, we believe we've come up with a solution that won't impact the view of it. And along the same lines, we'll be looking to add some very low-grade nightlight, you know, if you saw the one image there, just because it's a dark hole at night. You drive through there, it's just, this is lit up, that's lit up, and it's just, and that was very important, you know, to, to developer here. And as you can see, as you go through, yeah, we're working within the column grids and the existing concrete structure to flat plate board place concrete, board form, it's exactly what people are trying to do in new buildings, and here it exists.
And it's a new, a new trend. This polished concrete is really with a high ceiling, no tile, I think just rubber existing concrete, you polish it. It's a new trend that works out naturally as well.
And then some of our rooftop. All of this sits back from the roof edge, and you don't see it from the street below. You can see it from the river, but not in any impact to the street, in the street's cage. So, it's a nice blend of practical reuse of a very solid building, albeit dated. I mean, it was designed in 1962. The design drawings, it was built only in 67. So, I mean, we're getting back there, you know, solid 60 years, 61 years. So, you can imagine many of the systems, and the federal government stopped heavy maintenance on the building because they thought after Oklahoma City, they were going to be building a courthouse. So, they did some things, and it's in terrible shape, but it hasn't been modernized. And so, we're coming in to have to deal with those aspects of it, but it lends itself very well. So, we're, I think we're pleased, I think we put something that will most importantly probably bring anywhere from 240 to 280 residents to the downtown immediately, if not more.
Can we see the effect it has on the downtown?
That's putting a lot, I mean, I go back to the impact of the downtown many, many years ago when you marry Mar Walnut, that was a Pennsylvania place, when that froze up, and 480 people had to be removed from the building, 1% of the city's population overnight because of these, the sprinklers had frozen in over New Year's. And then it froze up, and the building sat empty for a couple of years. That was, you could notice that impact. This will be, you know, not quite as large as that, but it'll be a significant impact on the positive goal.
Well, my questions have already been addressed about the market rates and the historic register. So, let me just say, I like the size of your units. They seem to be really roomy. The two bedroom apartments are the same size as my house.
Well, which on the list?
Actually, we initially were thinking of, oh, another proposal was, I should put it there, was a higher number of units. We've reduced it down to generous on the size. So, the 62 was actually a reduction from, they should almost, we were operating 20 units a floor, but we came down to almost 15 as a maximum, some of the floors as this, to be generous on the side of the patio and the bedrooms and the bedrooms. So, the reduction came with the size that is, also something here where you're aware that the ceiling is high. The existing ceiling, once you remove the tropsey, it's almost trophy or trophy. So, that's by itself. So, we came up with a concept of this uncovered duct for condition, so a level for, for higher ceiling. So, the utility stuff is utilizing the existing floor to floor, which is really high.
Good job.
Commissioner George.
Just two quick questions. How many of the units are going to be ADA accessible?
You would ask. I do have it on the schedule here. I believe we have at least 36 units. We have two per floor, on either of the levels. And then we're looking at visibility design in all of them, so that, you know, if you have someone coming, you have the clearances for the larger doors, you can add grab bars in the future, not to prevent, you know, family and occasional disabilities. So, you don't want to leave your apartment because you temporarily broke a leg. So, and the building works out well for that, for large old four years.
Kind of in line with that, I noticed on the engineer's report that there was, he discussed cracked sidewalk and potholes and little bays area. Was there a plan in place to address those?
So, the looks of. Yeah, I think we're of the opinion that by the time all of our construction vehicles get in there for 12 to 14 months, there'll be a lot more cracked sidewalks and a lot more potholes that will have to be repaired. So, I think that just comes with the territory.
And all landscape of the construction vehicles.
Landscaping, yeah.
Would be naturally designed.
Again, we're, if you think about, we're implementing, we'll be using heat pumps, we're going to do lighting, a lot of natural ventilation, you know, for the walls. The reality, what we're, we're trying to do is build on the greenest building possible, and that is the building that already exists. You think about the amount of nitrous oxide and carbon dioxide that was released in making the concrete that went into that building in the first place. It's, it's being reused, and we're not spending money to crush it and take it to a length. And so, I think everybody says, well, it's got to be new to be green, really? You know, there are shades of it. But I think this is, we're trying to check towards that direction.
With that, I'll go to the public, and anyone on my left. I guess, pour against the project. Commissioners, I think it's a great project, especially, I do like projects that bring economic development to the city and taxpayers. That's the big thing. We definitely need taxpayers for the city, and this project appears to be that type of project.
It's one of the few times where a project's coming off the non-tax roll and onto the tax roll, when a city is almost 50% non-taxable.
Big wave.
Yeah, I knew I was going to say that because it was a federal building, they didn't have to pay taxes, so it almost like doubled that, you know, like taxes coming in. So, but I think it's a great project, and if any of you have any comments, if not, I ask for a motion.
We should improve the conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's the movement second for approval with the conditions, all those in favor, they might say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one extent, that's not too much. Motion carried, and good luck to everyone with the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks, Nicole.
Oh, Jeff, I know Lou, is this, the Capitol, that related to?
Yeah, I just said.
Okay. Okay, other business, any new business, Jeff?
No other business.
Commissioners, anything for the good other boys? If not, now the motion for a adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Sam.
Adjournment.